East Bay Bridge facade improvement.
Are you awake?
Here, I'll share with you.
Ready?
Good job, everyone. Thank you, Catherine.
Do a little preemptive packing up.
What's that?
Packing up.
She said so much. Got a lot of stuff for this.
This one was. I had to bring a backpack.
Yeah, usually I can cram it in my bag somehow.
Not this time. I have a tiny mailbox, so...
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I'm totally overwhelmed.
They just left this on my doorstep.
Good evening, commissioners. Are you ready?
Ready.
Are you ready is the question.
Well, I'm ready. So, this application is for the East Bay Bridge facade improvements at 3839 Emory Street. The location is on the corner of Emory with the back of the building along West MacArthur, on the south part of Emeryville. Whoa, that was really exciting.
Already through the presentation?
And that concludes my presentation. I know we all wanted to be early.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'm gonna try again. All right. Project overview, as you've already seen, is the changes are focused on the front of the building and the new facade improvements are designed to emphasize tenant identity. So, this project does include new landscaping. It includes new bicycle facilities. It includes additional lighting. It does not include any changes to the building footprint, any changes to the parking lot, or new signage at this time. So, this is a full facade overview. It's a very long block, so what I mentioned before is to the... I'm just having issues here. This is to the west is Home Depot, to the east is Pack 'n Save. We're gonna be looking at this block from west to east because more changes are happening on the east side than the west side, so we're just gonna go from more simple to more complicated. So, the east side of the project there has small retail and eating that's existing, and sports authority. I mean, this is just like really exciting. Okay. My apologies. Okay. So, as you can see here, there is going to be... Oh, I apologize. I'm gonna take one step back. It's been a long evening. On the dais, there's a materials board, and there is also fee summary sheets there that were not included in your packet earlier. So, no changes are happening to the existing smaller retail on the far west part of the facade, aside from the metal being painted to match the rest of the facade. The sports authority will get a projection out from the main facade and new awnings. Here's a rendering of that change, and you can see there's landscaping also in front. And this is the illuminated storefront there for the west area. So, now we're gonna go back into the east side. And the retail units here will be changing. The two current tenants will be leaving later in the year, and two new tenants will be coming in. And so, we're referring to those as Retail A and Retail B at this time.
They haven't announced that.
Not yet. So, here's the existing at the top there, and then the proposed, and you can see there's substantial changes. Once again, each entrance for each tenant will be projected outwards. There'll be new awnings to better reflect the tenant identity, and there'll be changes as well in height. Here's from the perspective looking into Retail A. And those metal fins there, they're painted on the inside, not the outside. So, between each fin, it's a painted color, but the outside of it is metal. So, that's when you look at the illuminated photo, it doesn't show those same colors. So, looking from... So, at the top, we have the full facade again, and below that is our elevations from the side showing how tall they are. So, the elevations become progressively shorter for each tenant facade as you move from east to west. This is the pedestrian perspective behind those metal fins in Retail A. Landscaping improvements. There's no landscaping in front of this facade currently, though there is a proposed six-foot-wide planting strip, and that strip is proposed to include 16 trees. 14 bicycle racks for temporary bike parking are required. The applicant is proposing these to be clustered in three locations located relatively close to each of the main entrances, and that will have a total capacity for 28 bicycles. So, I wanted to explain a condition of approval here for traffic calming. If the proposed speed tables do not meet the standards of the fire or public works departments, or not designed to the satisfaction of the fire or public works departments, the applicant shall install bulbous to the satisfaction of the public works director in lieu of speed tables. And this is included because, as you can see at the top, staff recommended bulbous. There's concern among staff about high speeds of travel people using this... These drive aisles here to connect between Emory and people driving very quickly. It's over 30 feet wide, and that including bulbous would also provide some opportunity for greenery. The applicant proposes an alternative, having speed tables instead. And as this was a design review application, and there was not a lot of technical detail at the point... At this point, so staff has not yet been able to conclude if this is actually appropriate treatment or not. It's possible that it would work, but there's concerns about feasibility, potential pedestrian conflicts, and things of that nature. So, conforming to major design review, it has to conform to general plan, urban design goals and policies, the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and also have a high design quality that is compatible with the surrounding area. So, this project is found to be consistent with the general plan, urban design goals. It has high quality. It establishes a more urban character at the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, which is called the Bay Bridge District, and the urban design goals. It meets the pedestrian priority zone requirements by having a landscape buffer and possibly the bulbous, and it prevents bulky and monolithic buildings by having increased articulation and varied materials and colors along the facade. For the Emeryville Design Guidelines, it supports various modes of travel by improving bicycle amenities as well as pedestrian experience through awnings and landscaping. And it also has generous planting strips and large healthy trees as required. It uses 3D elements, as I mentioned before, for awnings, facade variation, and horizontal articulation, and the sidewalks meet or exceed the requirements of the Emeryville Design Guidelines. And as I mentioned before, it meets the requirements of having high design quality and being compatible with the surrounding area. So, staff does recommend approval for this project, and applicant is here if you have questions, or if you'd like to ask me any questions at this time.
The speed tables? When you showed that diagram...
Yeah.
I mean, usually, I'm used to speed tables being where the accessible park... Well, I guess they have to locate them where they are so that they're outside of the areas where the accessible parking...
Right.
...is that what's going on?
That's correct. They can't be used in conjunction with, say, a raised crosswalk because it's a level parking lot, so there's nothing to raise for pedestrians.
But they're not... Where do they go to?
The speed tables, or the...
The speed tables are at the level of the sidewalk, or lower?
So, the speed tables are in the drive aisles, right? And they go right in front, and so there would be probably the width of that so that people... It would prevent people from speeding across the front. The idea would be to have a speed table to force traffic to slow down.
Oh, but they're not a walkway.
Yeah. Usually, they're a walkway to another sidewalk.
And you're saying that because on the parking lot side, there's not... There's no room to ramp down?
Correct. You're not going from an elevated curb to an elevated curb.
Yeah, right.
So, it's not the same sort of idea, yes?
So, the... On the proposed speed tables, there's also in between... So, at the very right side, near San Pablo, there's a... Is that a speed bump with the Chevron in the middle of it? Do you see? That's crossing the drive aisle, and then their sidewalk... I mean, crosswalk, crosswalk with the Haslam marks, right, and then speed table? So, if we're going from right to left...
Right, so there's three of what you're talking about?
Well, right in the center picture, see that item that has the diamond in it?
Are those... Those are also speed bumps?
Yes, what are those?
Those are...
Speed bumps that are already there?
Are those crosswalks?
They're not speed bumps.
That are definitely not speed bumps.
They're not?
No, it's just that they look like crosswalks.
That's a drafting error. That's a very technical drafting error.
And the thought that the two bulbous would be enough to offset the speed tables, or would we need, say, another one right where I was talking about, at that right area?
What staff was proposing was considered to be a minimum to help reduce speeds, so creating two points where it would narrow the aisles down to 20 feet, which is the minimum width required by fire and emergency response. However, you know, if you wanted there to be more, I suppose there could be more.
Would narrowing the aisles be as effective as a physical barrier like a speed bump? Because I think I could see cars... If there's no cars in this driveline, and there's still the narrowing, car could still go through at 30 miles an hour, but if they're gonna hit a speed bump or a speed table, that's a physical barrier that they need to slow down for.
I'm not sure technically which one is better. However, I live on a street with speed bumps, and people still go over them at 30 miles an hour. It's very loud.
Right, and they hurt their car, and they don't do it again another time, I wouldn't think, but is... I mean...
Depends on the speed bump.
Yeah, it depends on the design. But the idea here was that, generally speaking, my understanding is that traffic does drive slower when there's narrower aisles, and that if you have narrow aisles, it forces you, hopefully, to stop more for pedestrians instead of just swerve around them because you have maneuvering room, right?
I think the concerns, I guess the public works director's left, but I know that the fire department doesn't like speed bumps. There are speed tables currently on 47th Street, I think, which the fire department sort of grudgingly accepted. And their... The speed tables, I believe, sometimes have issues with drainage and other things like that, so I'm not sure exactly what the public works director or fire department's concerns are, but I guess the condition is just that these would be acceptable unless, after further review, they determine that there's some insurmountable problem that they can't live with, in which case the bulbous would be required.
And that's the conclusion they've come to?
Well, tentatively, yes, because, I mean, right.
They have had that secondary meeting where they've really come in that this is better.
Well, we didn't have the... We didn't have the information of, well, how high are the speed tables? How long will they need to be to facilitate, to be effective? So, part of the question was, are they even possible because of the length that would be required to go up, table, and go down? And we just didn't have that information at this time, and then there's the question of having them go directly, as you can see, to... Right by where there's a pedestrian path, and is that safe or not? So, there were several questions about it, which we couldn't answer before this meeting.
I think the reason why we have this condition in here is so that in the future, when they've developed this further and are ready to submit for building permit, and we've got the designs, and at that point when... Or maybe sooner, when public works and fire looks at it and raises issues that don't seem to be fixable, and we want to have the bulbous instead, we wouldn't have to then bring the whole thing back to the commission to have you re-approve it with a difference here, because you would have already approved a condition that gives us the authority to do this if it's a problem.
And if there are speed tables, then there would need to be truncated domes also to prevent the visually impaired from heading out into traffic, so I think there'd need to be a three-foot strip of truncated domes.
You mean if the speed table was at the same level as the sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I was sort of envisioning that they probably would slope down on the sides because, you know, you have drainage issues.
Yeah, so there's obviously several design issues that we just don't know yet, so that's why there's that condition.
And I just... I think it's pretty obvious for me, but I'm just gonna ask in clarification, the sloping awning parts that come down from the building, there, this fabric, this kind of plasticized fabric?
Yes, if the applicant would like to speak to that, but yes, that's...
The applicant would like to speak, yeah?
Good evening. My name is Marty Potts. I'm with MPA. I'm representing Federal Realty Investment Trust, the owner of the property. I heard earlier that Mr. Bryant has an early flight tomorrow morning to catch to Atlanta. I'm with you. I've got him seven o'clock myself, as well as another one of our team members tonight. With me is Corey Chung, our project manager here in our San Jose office, and Michael Straus of Federal Realty. First, I want to thank staff, and particularly Sarah getting us here this evening. I was pretty impressed with the fact that we filed an application on March 3, and here it is April 24. We're in front of the planning commission, and all the cities I've been at, I don't think I've ever gotten to a planning commission this quickly. You guys should be commended with your process. I think it's fantastic. A little bit of background first off, if I could for a second. Federal Realty acquired this property in 2012. For those of you who don't know who Federal Realty is, they're a national real estate investment trust. They're headquartered in Rockville, Maryland. They have west coast offices in San Jose and Santana Row that covers the entire western United States. And they also have an office in El Segundo. We're from... My office is down in Newport Beach. They're a retail office and mixed-use developer, primarily retail. So, they know... We're not too unfamiliar to anything that we're hearing or we've read in the staff report. Primarily, the proposal that's in front of you tonight is a market-driven proposal. Basically, that's brought us to this threshold. It's providing the opportunity for us to enhance the shopping center. Retailers, especially coming out of this recession, has changed drastically. It's not about signage anymore. It's about identity characteristic and, you know, personality coming out of the building. It's not just a sign where the pedestrian traffic is at its highest volume. We're concerned that that will cause distractions, conflicts, and potential accidents. We're more in favor of the speed tables. We know there's engineering challenges with them. We've done them before in other centers, and it does tend to slow down traffic, especially if you create more of a surface on the top of the table that creates vibrancy in the tires that make people slow down. We do a lot of projects in Orange County for the Irvine Company. They will not put a speed bump. They will not put a speed table in any of the projects, no matter how big they are, but what they do is they put in a roughed surface, and that roughed surface actually slows vehicles down. But we understand the need because of the long run we have here, and we feel the speed tables is a more appropriate application. We know the fire department and public works may not be their first choice, but we'd like to try to get away from the bulbs only because it... We believe it causes a security... A safety problem to the pedestrians in the project. I don't want to take a whole lot of time talking about the project. A, it's late. B, staff's done a pretty good job. It's a very basic, simple application of what we're attempting to create here at the center, make it look a whole lot nicer. And, you know, we seek your favorable approval. We support the staff report. We support the conditions of approval. We'd like to see the condition with respect to the traffic bulbs modified. And we appreciate hearing your favorable approval tonight. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Can I ask you a question? In your words, could you describe the identity that you're trying to create and kind of what client you're looking to attract that's different than now?
We're very excited to have Nordstrom Rack coming to the project, number one, as they're probably one of the prime, premier retailers in the business today. They have been for years. Bringing them to the center was a very feather in our cap, quite frankly. We would not have got them here. The design that you see with the fins, with the colored fins on the inside face in the light, the uplight to it, is a new Nordstrom Rack identity. It's part of their theming of their store. It doesn't say Nordstrom Rack. In fact, the picture you see is a Nordstrom Rack store. The sign's not on it yet. That's... But that's... Tenants want their branding. They want their identity. And that's, you know, by giving it an upscale with the awnings, the color, the landscaping, fixing the front of the building, making it more interesting, brings tenants to the project, brings a better tenant to the project.
That's kind of what I'm looking... Like, what is the identity you're trying to create? So, I can...
Their identity.
Nordstrom Rack, so you basically want...
Well, I mean, we don't... We didn't take the project and design it to say, hey, Nordstrom Rack, we'll design the building for you. That's not... We have a canvas to work from, the existing building, the existing steel structures. We had already envisioned that we were gonna upscale, upgrade it, put awnings on it, put color on it. To give it... To do something akin to it would be... We'll do... We have a center down in El Segundo, and we are doing none of the storefronts in the shopping center. We have... I'm making an oversimplification to make the point. It's a wall. It has an opening. The opening is for the tenant to go put their storefront in. There's a heavy design criteria that controls what the tenant can do, but it's sort of got that canvas with an opening, and the tenant's identity and personality can come through the opening. It can come up on the wall. If they want to do something special on the wall, some treatment along with their signage, we allow it. But it's that sort of approach and that methodology to this project as well. This is a little bit more restrictive. We have a storefront. We have a building that's already there, so we have to work within the framework of that, but it's to allow the tenant the ability to have some flexibility to let themselves be seen, other than just Nordstrom Rack on the building. Everybody's gonna find the store by Nordstrom Rack, but it's about branding. It's like if I said to you, what's the color of Starbucks? You'd tell me green. Everybody knows Starbucks is green, Target's red, although I know where there's an orange Starbucks sign, by the way, if you ever wanted to know. So, that's what I mean by the identity and the personality and the design coming through for the tenant.
Is there opportunity to utilize that concept that you spoke of in El Segundo, where the tenant kind of provides their own frontage? Is there an opportunity to do that here?
No. In the project in El Segundo, there's a storefront opening which they can design into, but there's a strict design criteria that they have to follow. It's not that everyone's gonna be the same. There's a lot of flexibility in it, and we went through a great... We designed the building, and we went through as much pain and process of designing the criteria for the tenant storefronts. There, the project is set up for that as a whole. Here, that's a very, very different project. The architecture's established. The openings are much smaller than they are we have there in terms of proportion. And it's more about allowing them to... Like Nordstrom Rack, when you see the elevation of that building, it has the fins on it. That goes up on the building. It goes above the storefront. It goes up on the wall. So, we're sort of giving them that right now, but we're controlling it a little tighter than we would doing something very radical. Doing something very radical here would not be in keeping with the rest of the project as a whole.
And another question. It looks to me like there's very minimal improvements on the... What would it be? The westernmost part of the building where Taco Bell and Starbucks and GNC and Radio Shack are? Is it... What is the reasoning behind that?
The... I'm gonna ask Corey with us, who's been involved in that portion of the project, to answer that, because I've been involved with major tenants. You want to address that?
Corey Chung with MPA as well. So, the impetus, if you will, for some of the tenant identity changes and the storefront changes on the eastern side of the site is driven partly by the existing tenants moving out later in the year, as Sarah referenced. The tenants on the, call it the food zone, the Taco Bell, the Starbucks, GNC, small shop zone are actually staying, and they are... There's some light improvements being done there that complement the improvements that we are doing on the other side of the line of the boxes.
Is there an opportunity to make those improvements more consistent with the improvements at the other end of the building? I'm concerned that it's gonna look pretty disparate.
At this point, we haven't... We've gone as far as we think we need to go, as far as the tenants are concerned. There hasn't been a plan. It's not put in the program to upgrade that. That's not to say in the future we wouldn't do that, but right now, this is a tenant-driven opportunity. If the tenants were still staying long-term on the east side of the project, we probably wouldn't be going to the extent of a renovation. It might be just more of sort of splash of paint and color. It wouldn't be as severe of a change. But we're doing that here because the tenants are driving it. As Corey said, the tenants in the food court area are not changing at this point yet. We're kind of cleaning it up a little bit, making a little bit of a better environment there.
Changing the color on the existing small shops?
Yeah.
And the signage staying the same, or the awnings staying the same? Are they new awnings, or...
Corey, do we have new awnings down there? No, they're existing.
I'm gonna chime in right here, right now. One of the conditions is high-quality materials. Those awnings... I spent about 20 minutes in that center on Sunday. Those... That whole end of the center is deplorable. The windows are dirty. They have all kinds of crap in them. The awnings are like dirty as all get out. The pigeon problems are a problem. I can't understand why Nordstrom would even want to put a rack in that store. So, along with the other things that I'll get into about the materials you're using, I'm not gonna be able to have a finding of high-quality materials in that project.
Of existing or new?
Both.
What's...
Well, I don't want to let Commissioner Moss finish his... Because I have about seven things here. So, as he asked, so the fabric awnings over Radio Shack, Taco Bell, are not gonna be replaced?
At this point, no.
Yeah, okay. That's a problem because they need to be replaced. Also, in regard to the smaller shelves, as I just mentioned, there are windows that are above the awnings. To me, they look like they need to be replaced. If nothing else, they really need a good cleaning, but I think they really could use being replaced. Also, in front of those spaces are some small, really sickly-looking trees. Is there any landscaping gonna be done at that end of the building?
There's some landscape maintenance planned.
Not the new stuff, but the existing stuff. Is that gonna be removed and replaced?
There's some... We're looking at the landscaping to take the downtrodden material out.
I would make that a condition of approval because looking at it, the plans it show... Go ahead, Charlie.
I would like to suggest that we let the applicant finish his presentation and ask him questions, and then deliberate on proposed conditions after you've closed the public hearing.
So, that's my question, is just if those... If that planning's gonna be updated. Also, underneath the awnings, there's some tube lights that are fluorescent that shine up. Are those gonna be replaced and modernized, or is that gonna remain the same?
We weren't planning on changing them out, but maintaining them, absolutely.
And then the towers, I guess, are probably not part of your project. There's one on San Pablo, and there's one on Hollis Street that matched the metal on the buildings, and is that part of your project? Are those gonna be painted and updated?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time. Okay, and so, and also, your group doesn't own this section of the retail that has Home Depot in it?
No.
Okay. And so, have you guys talked about any type of pigeon control?
We have not. We have not.
No, okay. Okay, I'll add, save my comments till later.
That's not to say that pigeon control isn't an issue that should be considered.
It is, it is a very big issue.
I actually have one more question that I forgot. And, oh, that is, so on the, I noticed kind of a discrepancy in the renderings and the plans in that. So there's this rendering on page two, and it looks like you're proposing to move the, basically, there's some landscaping, there's a landscape planner up against the building, and you're proposing basically to move that to sidewalk-level landscaping against the curb, which I think that's a great idea. However, in the rendering, it's shown on the side of the building. It looks kind of like the existing planner, except I was, I saw this, which kind of looks like horse tail, and I wanted to know what that was. And I went looking for it on the landscape plan, and I didn't see that planter, so...
Plus that.
Yeah, and, yeah, Commissioner Coomerly just pointed out there's some landscaping outboard of that planter that appears to be missing as well, so...
And there's no...
If you could address that.
Landscape plan that shows... It's in the landscape.
Let me show.
Right.
It will be changed out.
It's in the landscape plan, that planter.
The landscape...
Yeah. In the landscape plan, the planter and the lower strip remain.
Yeah, there certainly is a discrepancy. The landscape plan doesn't even show any new planting on the east side of the building, but that will be changed out.
Okay.
Okay.
You keeping that, where is the planter?
Is the intention that the planter stay, remain, like, maintain its current profile?
It's only 355.
Yeah.
And there's a post, you can't walk behind it.
Yes.
Yes, so it is to remain, or?
The planter's to remain.
The existing planter and the existing landscaping in that planter.
I would think by the time we're done with the remodel, that existing landscaping probably won't survive it, and then we'll probably end up changing it out.
Okay. All right. Then I think we'll probably want to know what you're proposing to replace it with, but all right.
I have a question. On page seven, the existing elevation versus the proposed, so closer to the, well, in front of the GNC, Taco Bell area, there are these concrete, I'll say they're benches. Those are showing, it looks like those are staying in the proposed elevation in front of the food area, but in front of the red awnings and on down towards the new tenant, I can't tell if those are being demoed?
Where the remodel's occurring in front, they're being removed?
Yeah.
In the food court area, they're remaining?
Oh, okay. It's the only question I had. No more questions?
Further comment?
Thank you very much.
Is there any member of the public would like to speak on this?
Hi, Bobby Leig, resident. Just two quick things. You know, I'm a frequent shopper of the center. Couple of safety issues around here. I know the parking lot wasn't a primary focus of the application, but there is a, there's a very weirdly aligned intersection by the food area where there's a stop sign, and then there's a couple of different directions you go, aisles coming out of different areas. It seems like, from listening today, it seems like they're kind of half-owned by federal realty, the other half possibly by Home Depot. I wonder if there is some way to kind of correct that issue there, where there's a lot of pedestrians coming, there's a lot of cars going in different directions, and just, there seems to be a lot of conflict in that area, and especially right in front of that food zone. Also, you know, coming to this shopping center in the evening, it is dark in that area, especially in parking lot, a little bit in front of the stores as well. I wonder if there could be something done in terms of installing more lighting, or brighter lighting, or more directional lighting to enhance the safety, crossing the drive lanes, also walking back to vehicles in the parking lot. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? Meeting is closed. Started this end.
When I look at page four, where it sort of shows the, it makes it feel like it's a promenade running along between the building and the steel support structure. But, I mean, what I've found in this area for all of these stores is that there's so much clutter in between the building wall and the support, the steel structure. It never really functions that way, and frankly, people just sort of end up on the area outside of it. And so if we're putting all this work into creating this promenade with these awnings, I guess I'd like to see, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how others feel, but the, I mean, if the bikes, I don't think that being under the awnings with all the openings is really going to protect the bikes from rain or the elements. So maybe moving the bikes and the trash cans and the plant, and the pots with plants in them outside of the steel structure area, it's actually, it looks like there's, it's wider between the building wall and the steel structure than it is from the steel structure then over to the planter. Moving everything out of this area and actually treating it as a promenade might be a nice approach, as opposed to putting the bikes and the trash cans and everything up against the building and pinching that point, and really pushing everybody outside of this area. I do feel like the, I mean, the food court as it is now is pretty dismal. It's basically some trees that are barely surviving and some concrete benches that I don't think are used very often. And so I would like to see that area, you know, the landscaping strip that you're showing along the driveway, or along the drive aisle, right now, you're showing it stopping before the corner, and it would be kind of nice to see that wrap around the corner a little bit, to see those trees, maybe the trees that are there now, instead of, you know, relocating them so that they're actually fall between the tables, maybe putting tables in where the benches are right now, having trees with some landscaping around them would be nice. And then, yeah, as far as traffic calming goes, I don't know how, I mean, the speed tables seem sort of odd to me, I guess, because I associate them with crossing between one sidewalk and another. So having them cross between a planter and another planter seems a little strange. And then also, their locations, as shown on the landscape plans, sort of partially pops into the entry areas. So whether it is speed tables or ball bouts, it seems like it'd be key to make sure that they're not entering into the area where the concrete, you know, you've got accident concrete paving as the entries to the stores, and then you've got the speed tables cutting right into those. So whether it is speed tables or ball bouts, I'd like to see those not interfering with those entries.
Well, in light of the new information that you've shared with us, and I really appreciate that you shared that with us, who your proposed tenant is for the retail site on the east end, I think that's going to make it even more critical to do something about the food zone area, because now you are going to have a lot of shoppers coming to Nordstrom Rack that are going to want to get coffee and food, and that area right now really is in really poor shape. It really needs improvements. It needs new trees. It's going to be utilized by the people shopping at Nordstrom Rack, but they're going to be sorely disappointed when they go down to that end and see how challenging and unkempt it is. So that's really going to be necessary, I believe, for this project to go forward. That said, I use that center quite a bit. We go to Home Depot hundreds of times a year. Being property owners, it's my, I think I've said this in the past, it's my kid's least favorite store. My daughter wrote a letter yesterday to Home Depot to request that they put in a play area. So, yeah. Sorry for getting off track there, but I do want to say that the, that drive lane is a real problem for people crossing that street, you know, little kids, and just getting across there, people are zooming by there. So it's definitely a problem. It's dangerous. You have to really watch yourself when you're going from your car to Sport Mart or whatever. So I'm in support of doing the bulb bouts. I do believe that they slow the traffic down. I've seen it around Berkeley, especially around the schools, and I drive my kids to school, so I physically know that I'm slowing down to get around those bulb bouts. And it definitely makes people more visible as they're getting ready to cross the road. So I don't really necessarily agree that it presents a safety issue. I think it actually slows the cars down more so. Then the only other comment I have is on the ribbon lighting. I just want to get a better understanding of the LED aspects of it. Is it LED? I think I read that. Maybe I'm getting that mixed up with the other project. But point being is that that lighting is facing residential, the apartments across the way, and so that would need to not create a nuisance to them at night. And then, because this is now becoming, this is really going to activate this area, having a Nordstrom Rack-type store there, really should look at, you know, making sure that there's adequate lighting in the parking lot, and that the area feels safe in the evenings. I share the concern about the pigeons. That was something that I jotted down, because the way that the, I guess, the signage is shown now, it just doesn't have anything on top, and you will need to do something about that. I think on one of our past projects, we talked about requiring shock tape and not those plastic sticky things that basically just deteriorate. And that's all the comments I have.
Well, I think it's better than what's there now, but the plans are very incomplete. Landscaping plan doesn't get into any details at all, and the renderings tend to make it look a lot slicker than it actually does now, including small shops down at the west end. And it doesn't really show how the lighting is going to work for the new stores, what the illumination is for the walkway, what the illumination is for the front of the building. It just seems very incomplete to me.
All right. I will say, one thing that I do like is the landscaping, which I mentioned before, just the moving of the landscaping to against the curb. I think that will buffer the drive aisle nicely, and the trees, I think, will look I do hope that the, not the bulb bouts, I do hope that the speed tables work, because I think those will be a much more effective means of traffic calming than the bulb bouts. And I'll just show my cards and say it, I just, I don't, it pains me when the fire department is a driver of urban design. So that said, the, I'm a little disappointed in the overall design. I think this, this looks really, it's like modern and dated at the same time. It looks, it looks, it looks very dated to me. And I'm actually really surprised, I'm really surprised that you say Nordstrom's Rack is a tenant that signed up. I do like Nordstrom's Rack a lot. I may have even bought this shirt there. But the, my impression of Nordstrom's Rack is not, is not these facade improvements. This, I mean, honestly, this looks more like, it looks like Mervyn's to me. And, you know, I think we know what happened to Mervyn's, but that's, I don't know, that's just when I look at it, that's what it screams to me. So I'm, I'm just a little, I'm a little disappointed, because I think that shop, in thinking about it, I think that shopping center's been there probably almost 20 years, and...
No, 95-ish.
Yeah, so almost 20 years, and I think, you know, just thinking that we could have this for the next 20 is disappointing to me. I don't think it's a, to me, it's not a drastic improvement over what's there right now. So I definitely, if we move forward with this or any other variation, I definitely would want to see more improvements over by the smaller tenants. I do think that's critical, you know, kind of at a minimum, replacing those awnings and maybe replacing the windows, as Commissioner Keller mentioned. But right now, I'm pretty hesitant to move forward with this design.
Okay. So I agree with you, Sean. I think this design is pretty, is lacking. Putting a coat of paint on the girders is a good idea. I think that's not a bad thing. But I think the materials of the awnings are, I'm very concerned that they're going to look pretty darn cruddy, pretty darn fast. So seems, that, it doesn't seem like the right solution. And I'm, since I do work with landscapes, I just have to say that I've always thought that the experience of this shopping center would be greatly improved by greening it up. That parking lot is an atrocity. It is the worst parking lot in Emeryville, hands down. And it always has, it's just, there's no trees, there's hardly any planting strips. So it's already a kind of a sea of concrete. And when I think about who the client, who your clients are, you know, it is Nordstrom Rack, and it is Starbucks, and whoever else comes in, but ultimately, it's the consumers, it's the shoppers. And if you can improve their experience, it's going to go a long way to improve everyone's life. So one thought I had is those girders would make excellent vine structures, which would make that whole experience, that kind of where you're walking under the vine, feel, it could feel really great. There's an example similar over, where is it? It's in, it's, there's a shopping center in San Ramon that has a, what is that thing? Whole Foods. And they have nice wisteria, big, and people eat under there, and they sit under there, and it's pleasant, and it's, it provides shade and life. So that's a possible opportunity that could be, could help this whole thing. And I really support the bulb bouts also for, to bring it into that human scale, because they could be planted. And it just improves the experience of getting in your car and walking to the store. So that would be important for me. But I'm not certain I can pass this at this point. I think it needs more work.
So first of all, I'm going to echo a lot of what's been said. I think it's an improvement. It wouldn't take much to make this an improvement. I think painting the girders is a really good thing. I'm very concerned with the canvas awnings. Those never last. I've never seen any fabric and any canvas awning that doesn't sag, rip, eventually fade, or just look awful. When I first saw these drawings, I thought, oh, those would look really cool, because I was thinking that they were enamelled steel. And I thought, now that would be the thing, because things would wash right off of those, they would never rip or tear. And one of the notes I put, the first one, was to ask if they were fabric, or if they're actually like aluminum or a composite. That's what I would recommend... That's what I would recommend for that and that's what I could pass. I cannot pass this just on that alone for the high-quality materials because I don't think, looking down at Starbucks and Taco Bell, those canvas awnings look awful. And so, so that alone is, and when you do that, whatever materials you use, I'd like to see more subtle colors. I'd like to see more of an aqua rather than a teal. I'd like to see something of a brick color rather than a bright red to tone it down. I think we do need to know what kind of lighting you're going to use underneath to make those walkways safer. I spent, as I said, a while there on Sunday and I did measure between the buildings and the steel posts. And you have about nine feet and three inches. And when a bike, when a bicycle parks head in, the bikes that I measured there range between five and a half to six feet. So, and a number of your racks, according to the plan, are positioned by some of those pillars. So you've restricted that walkway between the bike and the pillars to about three, three and a half feet. And that's a really nice promenade as it's been brought in. When you have a bike there, now you have to walk out and around the poles and then back in again. So a couple of suggestions I have is number one, the racks that currently exist between the main retailer of Sports Authority and GNC, I would take those. If you're looking at the racks, move them to the right and around the corner in front of GNC. There's plenty of room between the wall and GNC's doors where you could put bikes and they could head in that way. And they're totaled out of the way. And this is going to kind of fly in the face of Commissioner Gunkel's cleaning up that area is I've also measured that, what I'd like to see there are some BikeLink bike lockers. And I measured those, went to the North Berkeley-Bart station and those measure 39 inches wide. So it's just slightly over three feet in a nine-feet corridor. I think you'd still have plenty of room for people to walk around those and you could scatter those along the walls there. And you'd actually have secure parking for people rather than just bicycle racks. So I'd like to see that considered. And I really feel that as long as you don't do anything on that end where the food retailers are, you're putting lipstick on a pig because that place is really deplorable. I don't go to any of those shops and I'm surprised that Starbucks doesn't apply pressure on you guys because the pigeons that are around there, the awnings, the windows, it looks almost like the place is abandoned. And the trees there are just straggly little sticks that are trying to grow. And I think that whole new place, if you're going to put landscape along the edge here, you need to freshen up that space. And, you know, based on the items that we have to arrive at to approve this, I can't approve this site tonight.
Charlie, what can we do about this? Can we just reject it or do we, it's all become a study session rather than?
I think that's kind of what this is. I don't hear commissioners saying you want to deny this application. I think I've heard every, most of you say you think it needs more work. So I would suggest that the chair direct that the item be continued. I mean, is that correct?
Yes, acceptable.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Just in terms of comments, I wanted to also, the public comment mentioned the lighting, so that definitely needs to be looked at as well. So I just want to put that out there. I agree with that.
And also the stop sign. I meant to mention that. There is a lot of confusion at that stop sign. You come to the stop and then there's so much distance beyond that, the cars all get confused and they start going at the same time. And it's a constant issue and there's pedestrians crossing there as well, so.
So, if, if I may, one further point of clarification, if the commission decides to continue this item, you had opened and closed the public hearing. However, in light of any amendments to the design and/or other conditions that may come forward when the item is returned to you, I'd suggest that you also continue the public hearing portion of it as well so that the comment would, so that the public would have the ability to comment on any design changes that the applicant brings the next time it's before you.
So are you suggesting they reopen the public hearing and then continue it?
Yes, yes.
And they just reopen it when it comes back?
You could do that too. I would just, I just want to make it clear for the record that the public, you would want to consider the ability for the public to comment on new design when it comes back to you.
I would encourage that.
Yeah, I would also, but I don't think we need to reopen the public hearing now.
I just wanted to clarify which stop sign you were referring to, is there's many?
This is the stop sign between Starbucks and Home Depot.
Thank you.
So you don't need to make a motion or take a vote on continuing. The chair can just direct that.
We'll continue this at the next meeting.
I would suggest you just continue to a future meeting. We don't know, you know, how long it'll take them to respond. I would suggest though that you ask the applicant if they are clear on your direction or if they need any clarification.
Will the applicant come forward?
Thank you. We are clear with your comments. I just want to point out one thing though. The Nordstrom Rack and the adjacent tenant, those spaces aren't just painting and fabric awnings. There's actually a lot of architecture that's been placed on those buildings as well. The Sports Authority building is paint and awning because it's the existing tenant. So there's a, as Sarah brought up earlier, she kind of went the hierarchy of where there was very little work being done and built up to the east where there was the most work being done. So I just want to make sure that I communicated that clearly because I didn't, obviously didn't do a very good job of that, that the architecture on those two buildings is more than just storefront awnings. It's considerable a bit more when you look at the elevations. But we understand the comments that have been made tonight. Thank you.
Well, I personally understood that and I think that's where I have a problem because that's a connected project. That is, there's no delineation between Starbucks and where Nordstrom Rack is going. And to do all this immaculate work, and I kind of agree with Commissioner Moss that unfortunately, I couldn't put my thumb on it when I was looking at it, but it does, it looks dated already. But that's Nordstrom's image, so that I understand you have to keep with. But you're doing all that work and then all of a sudden Sports Authority and everything just kind of drops off. Now, I can understand not doing any work at Home Depot because that's not your project, but to do this amount of work on these two spaces and then just kind of quit at Sports Authority is where I really have a problem because you're just, you're dropping the ball.
One building.
Yeah, it's one building. It all needs to be updated and cleaned up. Otherwise, why do anything at all, is my opinion.
And you are painting the steel on that end, so.
Yeah. And I don't think you have to go to the level of what you're doing in Nordstrom Rack at Sports Authority. I think you need to clean up what's there and, you know, refresh and renew those. Those awnings look like they're original to the building.
The landscaping.
And the landscaping is really bad, yeah. So that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move, I mean, order, I guess, that we continue this to a future meeting.
And keep the public comment open? Do we have to do?
Well, no, it wasn't reopened. You can just, you can reopen it when it comes back.
Make your comments during the meeting.
I made enough.
Right.